All right, good evening everybody. I would like to call to order the Budget Workshop Special Meeting for Tuesday, June 19th, 2012, and ask everyone to rise for the Pledge of Allegiance by Councilwoman Howard.
I pledge allegiance to the Constitution of the United States of America and to the republic which stands alone, one nation, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
All right, thank you everybody. And I would also go on to the next item, which is the roll call. I would like the record to reflect that all council members are present except councilmen and wardrobes themselves is out of town this evening. And the next item is the approval of the agenda.
Is anybody approved?
I do have a, I would request the council to approve moving item 8A to be before the Budget Workshop. Is there anyone who would like to comment on that? All right, so I have a motion. Do we have a second to approve the agenda?
Second.
All right, I have a motion of a second. I want to hear you say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Thank you. Okay. And then we're going to move on to public comments. I do have a few speaker cards. I'll start with Ms. Cindy Black.
Um, I'm speaking on an end line.
Okay, I am six eight, that's right. Okay, how about Ms. Norma Almaro?
Good evening, hello council. My name is Norma Almaro. I reside at 165 Casper Way in Fillmore. First, I want to start by having a comment about the Honey Festival. Thank you to everyone that participated or involved in putting it together. I talked to other merchants. We got a lot of brand-new foot traffic people that did not even know Fillmore existed. Sales were great. It is very much appreciated by all of us. And it goes to show that if there was a way we could have some type of event once a month, at least 12 events a year, that would do wonders. Thank you. Second, I am currently starting to put together an art walk. It's called Friends on Central. Anyone that would like to participate, any medium of art, come to see me at Vintage Pleasures. I will give you the information on the media we're going to have. And lastly, does it like show? There's no way to have it show on the bicycle, huh? Okay, well, take my word for it. Okay. Twenty-five years ago, I purchased a 10-speed swin bicycle. I used it one time around the block, and then I thought, you know what? It's easier to drive my truck. So I hung it up in the garage, and it's been there since. I am now selling raffle tickets, $10 each, or two for $15, where 100% of the net proceeds will be donated to the pool and park funds. The original sales papers are included. The bike is displayed, yeah, it's there. The bike is displayed at 326 Central Vintage Pleasures. Come in and buy your tickets. 150 tickets will be available, and when all are sold, the raffle will be held and the winner will be announced here. They will also receive a phone call. Even if you don't need a bicycle or want a bicycle, think of it as a donation. And if you win, just donate it back and we'll do it again. Over and over again, many people complain and use negative language against the city of Fillmore and against the council. I don't do that. Over and over again, I hear the words, "What's in it for me? What has the city done for me?" My feelings are, we, you, I, we are the city. If you love your little town as I do, then please, why not see what you can do for Fillmore instead of waiting to see what Fillmore can do for you? Thank you.
All right, thank you, Norma.
Ms. Almaro, I want you to put me down for four tickets.
Oh, thank you, Brian. And actually, I forgot Christina Haloma bought the very first ticket today. So, thank you.
I too.
Oh, anyone else? I have the tickets for whatever, but, okay.
That's okay.
So just donate.
Donate mine.
Okay. Gee, this is cool. I'm going to do it again. Thank you very much. If anyone in the city of Fillmore is listening, please, if you love your little town, come and donate the ten bucks. It's beautiful. Thank you.
Thank you.
Can we fill this? Oh, Ryan.
And I...
Your helmet.
It's a blue swin.
Should I leave it here or do I leave it?
Well, I'd take it to your store so people can see it.
Did you watch it dry the two months ago?
No helmet.
Do you want to work it?
There's a helmet on.
Thank you so much.
Uh, thank you for your comments, Ms. Almaro. But I also want to also point out and give credit to Fillmore Western Railway who put on the first annual Honey Festival. I think they intend to make it an annual event.
It was a very positive thing for that.
Great, I'll let them know.
Thank you.
Thank you. All right. My next speaker card is for Mr. Steve Conaway.
Tonight, I speak as a citizen. My name's Steve Conaway. Reside in the city of Fillmore. To say that Fillmore is experiencing problems is an understatement. We have serious budgetary issues, but we have ongoing litigation issues. We've lost all employees with historical knowledge of city activities. These employees were laid off only to be replaced by consultants. Many people question the wisdom of the decisions and recommendations being made to the council. The latest snap move took place on Monday. Mayor Gail Washburn called the city attorney's firm. She essentially, basically banned the city attorney from attending city council meetings. That's why Steve Lee, the firm's HR attorney, is here tonight. Her justification for taking such egregious actions has something to do with his personal relationship with the former city employee. It's 2012, folks, and individuals' personal life is none of your business. Also, at the city council meeting, viewers observed the city attorney correct a misstatement by the city manager, only to be sharply cut off by the mayor. That's the city attorney's job, mayor, is to correct misstatements so the records can be accurate. The public deserves to know what makes you think you can do such things. Besides the city manager, you, mayor, must have had other council members support before you took such actions concerning the city attorney. Regardless of what the mayor says, she has grossly overstepped the limits of her position. I see the actions taken by the mayor as simply flat-out wrong. This action shows terrible judgment and appears to be nothing more than a personal vendetta being executed. The city owes Mr. Schneider and his firm an apology for the improper actions taken. Thank you.
Yeah, thanks for your comments. However, I will state for the record that what you have characterized is not what happened. So I'll leave it at that, and perhaps at another date, we can discuss the truth. Yes?
Um, Mr. Conaway said something about other council people might have known something, but it's the first I've heard about it right now. So that's an assumption that's true.
For the record, I had no knowledge of it either.
All right, thanks.
I appreciate the clarity by the rest of council. Thank you.
Well, and I don't know if you gave me your information, but we'll get the, get the record correct. All right, is there anybody else in the audience who wishes to speak on the matter that's not on the agenda? Nope? Okay, then we're going to move on to our Budget Workshop. Oh, no, I'm sorry. We're going to move to item 8A. And that is, I have a speaker card for that. And here's Ms. Fritos. And let me read the item. This was a consideration and possible approval of Resolution Number 3343, Resolution of the City Council Supporting SBA 43, the Community-Based Renewable Energy Self-Generation Act, a bill related to local renewable energy production.
Good evening, Honorable Mayor, Members of the City Council, Resident City Staff. My name is Ana Hulco Sanchez. I'm the Public Affairs Regional Manager with Southern California Edison. A part of my responsibility is to review the agendas on a regular basis and to ensure that if there are any matters that are important to the company, you know, that I haven't reviewed internally. This is, as you just mentioned, a mayor, under consideration for possible approval of resolution. And my comment tonight is that if the council opts to move forward with a resolution, I would like to then present a copy with the Edison's position that we are in opposition at the time because of some of the language that the Senate bill includes.
Okay. Would you like to present the language that you were referring to?
Well, the letter that I wrote is, you know, before you, and it specifies the Edison's concerns.
Okay.
Yeah, so I, you know, that's, you know, I not only forwarded a copy via email, I brought a copy tonight as well. And I could need a copy with a city clerk of you, if you have one.
Yeah, please do. And what I would like to suggest to the council and Ms. Fritos is, Ms. Fritos Sanchez, is that we continue this item to our next agenda so we have time to review your materials before making a decision on this.
I appreciate that. Thank you.
All right. I would agree with that. I guess you have to, since this is everyone, we continue it.
I agree to continue here.
Okay. Thanks, everybody. So with that, I guess we are ready for our budget presentation. And this is the third Budget Workshop that we've had. We're going to continue for our third workshop, and next week will be the fourth workshop, and most likely, the adoption of the proposed budget to the council. And I'll just kind of give you an outline. The first week, staff, the finance director and city manager gave an overview of the budget and all the issues on it, and presented everything to us. We had a little bit of discussion. And then the second week, last week, we, we had council discussion and another presentation on all the policies that were being changed, such as the layoffs and closing parks, restaurants, and so no decisions were made, but we did have some lively discussion. This week, I'd like to hear staff's presentation, and if it's okay with the council, I'd like to discuss the department, the budgetary items, and present any recommended changes to staff, and have discussion on that, and then let staff come back next week with any changes that we've presented. Is that how we're supposed to sit here?
Actually, the way that it would work is, you're right, today we'd be looking for direction from the council on how to present, how to prepare and plan all the budgets. So what we're bringing to you on the 26th is actually all the documents for the council to adopt the budget. So it would include any changes that you made from the first meeting through now, and it would include, like, any changes to the master fee resolution, any changes to the, you know, all the budgets. We put it together in a resolution form and a staff report and bring it forward. It'll be the personnel changes, which are in the resos that you adopt each year for the unrepresented as well as the represented. So we'll be bringing the entire package of things that the city council intends to adopt the budget, assuming that that's how we end tonight.
Okay. Okay. Does anybody need handouts?
We have some right, right back there.
Okay, there are handouts for anybody in the audience who wishes to follow along with the slideshow presentation?
Okay, to get started, we have a budget summary. And the total budget, and this is, you can look in your budget on page, you'll find these numbers on pages like 10 and 8. You'll see the total budget expenditures is about $24,700,000. The total revenues is 22. The difference is about 2.6. And that excludes all transfers out, transfers in, and what the difference of $2.6 million means is that that's mostly beginning balance there. So we have a $24 million budget in its entirety for the city. The general fund is the, is the budget that everyone tends to be the most concerned about because the council has the most discretion over it. We also have, of course, the water and the wastewater funds, which utilities, which we'll be discussing tonight as well. And there have been a lot of questions over the last several weeks about the way that Fillmore's budget and the level of detail that is being requested. So what I thought I would do tonight to make it a little bit easier is that, so that everybody has a common understanding of what the city uses to do its budget. And for several years, for many years, the city has been using a series of linked Excel spreadsheets, okay? I was budget manager in Fresno, which has a budget of about $500 million and about 3,400 employees, and the process in 14 operating departments. As you can imagine, to keep track of all that complexity, there, they have, we had automated position costing. We had, the budget was a budget module that we used that was specially developed for us. So you've seen that little, the Staples Easy Budget. So when people would ask a detailed question, we could provide that information very quickly because all the information was readily available. What is different about Fillmore is it doesn't have that kind of costing, and it's done in a series of linked spreadsheets. It isn't uncommon for smaller cities to do budgeting this way, but where it creates a challenge is if someone is asking for a customized report, and I'll get to that in just a second. We don't use program budgeting, where all the costs and all the revenue for a particularly, particular activity are all lumped. What we do instead is we take all the costs for a particular category and put them into one place. And so what that means, when someone asks for, I just did this as an example, for the parks, this is the parks budget, and what it contains, you can see, there's all the money in it. Okay, to sort through it and figure it out and talk, and you'll see a little bit later on, what Shields Park costs, Two Rivers, all the cost, you have to, someone has to take it and dump all the money out and then sort through it. So put it in stacks of quarters, nickels, dimes. That's how we end up having to come up with the information that's requested when you ask, when anyone asks for detailed reports on what each park costs. And so, as you can imagine, that's time-consuming to do that. And so that's why when the public or the council asks for these detailed reports, that's what we have to do to get that information. Also, as I said, because we don't have position control software, to figure out some of the information about, you know, contract employees versus regular employees and what the cost difference is, what productive hours, what's the cost, this is what we had to go on the show, everybody. Someone had to go through this, pick up all the reports, and then go through them line item by line item and create a spreadsheet, and then go back and organize it. So in a city like Fresno, which has automated software, this stuff is already programmed into it. In Fillmore, we don't have that. So to find out that information, we have to do it by hand. And so, and I deeply appreciate Glenda because that's what she and her staff had to do the past couple of weeks to get this information. And when we're pulling this information, it's also in addition to the regular day-to-day tasks. So last week was bill paying. A lot, we have a lot of vendors who actually live in Fillmore, and they have their business in Fillmore. And so the person, the account person, the fiscal assistant who was doing that work, had to also not only pull out the cost, go through this to figure out what the parks really cost, but she was also trying to get people paid. And if you're a small business owner, getting that check is really important to you. And so that is, so when the customized report requests come in, we have to do this, and then we also are trying to get the, the regular work out as well. So I wanted to go through those steps so that we all were on the same page on why it, what the process is, why it works the way that it is, the way that it does, and to make, and provide that information to everybody. There's also been some, I think, a little bit perhaps of misunderstandings about the parks, restrooms, and I'm going to that first because that has been the most, caused the most controversy or concern. The fiscal year 2013 budget has the parks funded for, for the entire year. The money's there in the budget for the parks for the entire year. The issues that staff were raising was because, as everybody knows, we have the whole issues with the RDA that we have to still deal with. They disallowed anywhere between $1.9 to $2.3, $2.4 million in cost, and we still have to figure that out. And then the other issue is that next year, we're looking at roughly a $1.3 million shortfall. So we're trying to bring this forward to people, so the public, the council, so that everybody knows what are the issues that the council is facing in the upcoming years. The budget did contain a proposal to close the restrooms at city parks, and so we removed the employee costs from that. Last Wednesday, we met with the sports teams, and they said that they're interested in taking over the restrooms. And in fact, there's supposed to be another meeting tomorrow night at 7:00 PM, and we're going to discuss that further. And so if the sports teams are taking on the restrooms, and they indicated that they may end up trying to contract those out through their own organization, what that leaves is a decision on the Central Park restrooms because, for obvious reasons, that really has nothing to do with sports, and the sports teams have not yet indicated an interest that they would like to take that on.
If I could make a comment, I think it might be appropriate to ask Fillmore Western to maintain that bathroom. I think probably a lot of the users are train riders, and I'll be, we can ask them about that and then let them maintain it and keep it locked, maybe when there's not an event.
Okay. Okay, so here we get to the cost comparison. And so we pulled up the information, and the cost, so, and by the way, I need to back up a little bit. The parks maintenance cost in the budget contains much more than just these four items. It also contains costs for, like, the maintaining, the landscaping around the police department. It contains the cost for the maintaining of the grass around the library, bike paths, there's a whole bunch of things that are put into that parks maintenance. It's not just strictly Parks Parks. So Shields Park, in this year's cost, it costs about $75,000. Next year, it's 58,000. The difference is about 16,000. Dolores Day costs about 63, almost 64,000. The cost this year is 51,000, and the difference is about 12. Two Rivers is about 90,000, and there is the 2013 cost, about 77,000. The difference is 391. The, and we did the culminated restrooms, 15,000, about 11,000, so it's about a $4,000 difference. The total is about $46,000. That's to, between last year and this year, and it's mostly in employee services. There was an anomaly that we ran across when we were isolating those costs. Two Rivers Park didn't have any recycled water built into it as a cost. And that is, that is something we need to take a look at next year because of the fact we charge other users for, and I understand, someone told me that it's not in the pro forma. The problem is that when you, if the city, if that is in fact correct, and the city isn't paying for that recycled water, and other jurisdictions such as the, the school district and other people who buy it from us, then that is in effect a subsidy. And so that is something that we need to just figure out next year because that means that the businesses, the ratepayers, end up having to pick up that, that cost if another fund isn't paying for it.
Mayor, may I ask you a question? I'm glad you brought that issue up because I had the same question. So sent an email to Bert Rapp and asked him about that specifically, and he says, "When I left the city, the general fund paid for water for the parks at Dolores Day and Shields and Central Park. Two Rivers Park receives free recycled water because the park is an important sewer enterprise facility, providing important disposal capacity and critical emergency holding capacity, in addition to having already been funded by the sewer plant project itself." And then he went on to say, "The city is required to pay for water at the city parks. The parks are not owned by the water enterprise. Operating a park is not part of the obligation of the water enterprise. It's illegal for the water enterprise to subsidize the city general fund. All funds transferred from the water enterprise to the city general fund must be reasonably justified. Having the water enterprise provide free water to a city park is the same as having the water enterprise pay the general fund monies without a reason or justification." So while it looks like an anomaly, it, in the, in Bert's opinion, it is not because the investment that the sewer fund made in the park itself and the critical storage area that was funded, that's an emergency storage area for over a million gallons of recycled water. So I went to the expert, he's no longer here, but as you know, he's still providing services to the city, even as early as today, on some critical reports that were missed. So Bert's opinion, and hopefully that can be considered because it did stand out, and I agree that it looked odd, but that's the response.
And, and thanks for that, Steve. Thanks, Steve. And I'm going to have to dig out the old pro forma because I, I do think that the old pro forma indicated that the sewer fund was supposed to pay for the maintenance of Two Rivers Park.
The, that's not the issue.
Not the maintenance.
Right. It's the, if, it is unusual for a, a, usually the, I'm trying to think of the simplest way to explain this. It's unusual for a sewer enterprise to build that into a pro forma. I mean, that's the simplest way to say it. And so because when that happens, even though it, you know, may be providing valuable storage, what that means is someone has to eat that cost. And so that, in other words, they're not getting revenue from that cost in the sewer fund, and so that flows toward what all the ratepayers have to pay. And so what we, we just need to take a look at it, and who knows? It may be okay to do it that way, but it is a little bit unusual to have that kind of, of way of doing it in the pro forma.
Okay. All right. We'll take over. We'll take a look at it.
Okay. Then the next thing that was a, just make sure I didn't go, okay. Then the next thing that we had was, there was a lot of talk about the employee reductions and why they were made, and, and so I'm going to, I appreciate your bearing with me as we go through what happened last year. You will recall that last year, the city had a consultant to do a, a study, an organizational review on the city's operations, and because we saw how desperate our financial situation was, and we asked them to go through our operations and to make recommendations on the basis of what they see in other cities and knowing our organization, because they had interviewed everybody and talked to them about what they did, to make recommendations to us on how we could streamline our operation. And those were, those recommendations were adopted in the last budget year. It resulted in a 30% reduction in staff, and then in this year, we did have some vacant positions that were left open. And what we tried to do in order to have salary savings, as well as to make sure that if we continued to have to make cuts, we filled those positions with contract employees because they are cheaper than having a regular city employee, and also, we're not going to be hiring someone only to be laying them off. So we knew that we still had a financial problem. What wasn't clear was exactly what was going to happen with the redevelopment agency, and as you know, at the very end, all of a sudden, they decide, the state decided that they were going to, to do away with redevelopment, and it's had a severe budget impact on us. So, for 2013, as you, we've all lived it, the employees have lived it, and so has the council. The past two years, you've had significant reductions in your levels of staffing, please, fire, finance. The employees have all seen big wage and benefit concessions, and we've also laid off people. The state has cut redevelopment funding, and general fund has a structural imbalance. And we've been talking about, we had a 1.5 million dollar problem this year, we're gonna have a 1.3 million dollar problem next year. The positions, and this is called out in the message and in my presentations over the last several meetings, the positions that get most of their funding from the general fund and redevelopment are the most at risk, for obvious reasons. That's where we've lost the funding. And at this point, with the reductions that we made for the last two years, there are limited options on what can be cut. So to try and make it work, we made positions, we have proposed making positions part-time. And in the past, the city has used contract positions to get, get work done. In terms of the overall employee salary and benefits reduction, what we did is we just went back to the last two budgets. So this is what's budgeted, and it is for 2011 to 2012, there is a total reduction of about, almost 1.6 million. This year, there's a reduction for 1112 to 1213, there's a reduction of about 649,000 across all funds. So in the last two years, the city has cut roughly 2.2 million dollars. And that's based off the, the budgeted amount. And if you go and look at those in the budget, it's like on 22 and 23. So you can go back to the last budget in this one. Okay, then we did that, then we did a really fun, fun analysis.
Mayor, may I interrupt before we move on to employee cost savings? So, given the reductions that we've done, I'm using the graph that was handed out last week, and I have an answer to this. This is the 2013 budget overview document that was handed out in June 12. With the staff reduction that we did last year, and what's proposed now takes us to about 50% reduction in employees, in addition to all the other cuts that are cut in services. When I look at the graph that was supplied in this document, the expenses projected for, well, I guess it's the end of 2014, is that correct? Or is that at the beginning of 2014?
What, when you say graph, graph to me is the first one. Okay, that's based on actuals, except for the last couple of comments, I mean, columns.
1213, 1411.
Right.
Okay. So, looking at that, when I look at what's projected in 2013, and even my glasses, I have a hard time reading that small font, but it looks like we're not very far off from where we're at in expenses in 2008, '09 budget, even with all those cuts.
What I, what I'm, the...
And then back then, we had full complement.
Right. And what I'm telling you is that when you look at just the employee cost, that's where we have to look at. That amount is what has been cut. But you have to remember that what she's giving you, the first three or four years, that's actuals, so she went back and removed all the one-time costs, just to show you what we were trying to illustrate, is what that structural imbalance is. And then she did the projections for the next two years. Costs have, for example, even though we've been cutting the shareup, you know, through the last couple of years, but still costs go up. And the even, and there are, so even though you cut, costs still go up, it's on a different basis. Do you have more you want to add?
I was just gonna say, part of it also has to do with the reallocation of employees. At one point, the, not only did we have the transfer coming in from the RDA to help support the general fund, but you had employees charged directly to the RDA. So when you look at the RDA budget, and you figure the majority of that was salary and benefits, and now, not only have we lost that as a funding source, plus the transfers, you've lost a lot of money. And you also go back and look, because those people were spread, a lot of the people were spread and charged directly to economic development, or to RDA, or to housing. And now, those funds have all gone away, and even though we, we cut positions, like, one of the positions did housing, was charged mostly to housing, that's one of the positions that's gone. We don't, even though that person's gone, that money source was RDA, it wasn't city.
Right. My memory back at that time is the, the transfers were line item by line, I have a very extensive, very, I guess it may be for a thick document, but once it was understood, it was pretty easy to track the transfers going from those funds into the general fund, paying for those employees. That's, that's my recollection, but, you know, it's been a while since I looked at the 2008 budget. And I, I'm looking at the graph that was supplied, and I'm wondering, you know...
We keep cutting and why aren't the costs...
And we're right back to where we started, when we had a full complement of employees.
So what you're saying...
I appreciate your, your responses, thanks.
What you're saying is, if we were to compare apples to apples, that we would have to put in all those RDA costs from years past, that were put in the budget, we'll put somewhere else. So actually, our, our costs were even higher than, than this graph, which just didn't get gone from the general fund.
Correct.
It was, it was, a lot of the employees were pro forma being funded through other incentives, or RDA.
Or other funds.
Or other funds.
Right.
So our expenses were actually, for the whole animal called Fillmore, including the RDA, our expenses were even higher than what is shown just on the general fund expenses. Does that make sense? And I just...
Yeah, and I have to go back and make sure I look at, at the total expenditures, that pretty much is, and, yeah, I know, I keep saying, we keep cutting and expenditures keep staying. The other thing you have to take into consideration is both the 13 budget, or the 13 budget and a little bit of the 14 budget includes the city's payment for the tax sharing agreements also, which in 13 is like 242,000. So you pick up 240-some thousand for the tax sharing agreement. How many employees is that?
Plus legal costs.
Legal costs are pretty much, we kept the budget at like 280 between the two, so the legal costs for the last couple of years are, have, are remaining, which are the legal costs in previous years that were higher. I think the bottom line, and I've, I've said this before, I think one of the challenges for us, it makes it a little more difficult for us than it does other cities that are having these budgetary issues, is that Fillmore's entire, well, 95% of our city limits was dedicate, or called blighted redevelopment. And the reason for that was so we could take on more debt. We did that in 2006, and then proceeded to go into debt with three separate bonds that year, to fund the parks and the sewer plant and some other things, and those that also paid for a lot of staff time. We were very dependent on RDA, more dependent on RDA than other cities. So that's, that's the way I see it.
So, the other question was, okay, is it cheaper to have a city employee versus a contract employee than what's the cost comparison? So, when you look at the function, which is the municipal services department, this is building code and public works, the city employee cost is roughly with different pieces of functions put together, because the consulting firm that is providing that service is doing clerical as well. So there's other things that they're doing in addition to, to building inspections and some minor plan checks. They also have some clerical help in there. And about an eighth of the, they also help to oversee what is going on in public works. About an eighth of, of the municipal services director salary was charged to that. So when you add that up, it comes to 177,000. The amount we paid is 94, we, what we did is, we took all the costs that we had to whatever date it was, and for that, and for that position, I think it was the end of May, and then we just projected it forward, is that okay? We'll say, we'll add on the amount that it seems to cost us per month for June, and so that gives us a total cost of 92,780. And the difference is 84,000 in savings. For finance, we have the assistant agency manager position that does HR, payroll, and utilities. And the amount that was budgeted for that this year was 94,516. The amount, again, taking it through June 30th, is 56,761. So the difference is 37,755. In finance, there's, we have an accountant position. For this one, what we had was, we actually had someone working for three months, which was before they took another job. So, we adjusted for that, and the city employee cost was about 71,000, and the contract employee has cost us 80,000 or will through the end of the year. So the difference is about 9,500. Then we have the admin, the deputy city clerk, admin assistant. City employee cost was 74,493, and the contract employee, we paid 33,798 through the end of the year, which is about a $40,000 savings. So when you add everything up, the difference between what a city employee cost and a contract employee is roughly 153,000. And what we did is, too, and we also did the calculations on an annual basis. We tried, we figured that would be the next question. So there's still the savings, even if it's done on an annualized basis, and that's about, it's about a $52,000 savings.
Question again. The, the tax under the, the graph says it doesn't include 35,000 for unemployment insurance, and that's per employee, I believe?
What, what do you mean? Like, you have to pay it for a city employee?
Yeah. That's a liability that would be added to, to the expense of...
Of having an employee, yes.
Having an employee, laying them off, so essentially, why wasn't that factored in into this equation? Why, why was the unemployment not looked at as an expense when we're laying off employees?
Okay, if we're gonna do that, then all that's gonna do is just jack up the 150, result in more savings?
Actually, it wouldn't, because that, that is a cost, it's a liability with hiring the contractor. Laying an employee off would trigger unemployment insurance, which would imply...
Not for, not for a contracting employee, we need to back that.
Please, please listen. I'm not speaking of unpaid unemployment on the contractor, I'm saying if you lay an employee off, that triggers unemployment insurance.
That we have to pay.
We would have to pay.
Right.
So if all these positions were basically, just, if we just counted four people that were laid off, why wouldn't we look at the unemployment insurance as part of this calculation and equation? Because that's, that's essentially another 130,000 of liability the city takes on for laying somebody off. Why wouldn't that be factored in here?
Because some people got jobs immediately.
But you don't know that. So a part of your calculations should include it.
No, because we didn't know that, that's why we pulled out the cost and identified it. For this precise reason, we didn't want, we left it out, we identified what it ends up costing if you lay someone off, because different, it's different than the private sector. The, in the private sector, you're really only on the hook for UI for about six months. But for a city, especially if, if all the criteria are met, so that it runs the whole 18 months, then you have to pay...
It's about a year or 18 months, that's a good ballpark, but it, it doesn't make sense to me that we would look and say that we're saving this amount of money when that liability of 35,000 is hanging on over your head. Now thankfully, the employees got other jobs or moved on, or whatever the case, and we didn't have to pay that liability, but that's a risk when you lay people off. So it doesn't make sense to me that it's not factored into the equation, because if it was factored in the equation, that difference basically evaporates.
I would disagree. I would say 35,100 is more an estimate of an actual, not what possibly can happen. Is, or she's factoring in what's, what's probably happening, as opposed to the possibility that people have an 18 months for unemployment, which has not happened yet, that many of the people laid off have already gotten new jobs.
I just think that the methodology is...
I would disagree. I want to know...
...in the industry standard for the public sector.
I disagree with you totally.
I'm sure you do.
Well, you're sure right. Just a moment. Here's the point. We want to know what's happening for real. We want to know real numbers. This is not about figuring out all the worst-case scenarios, this is about how do we deal with what's happening? You asked if they were saving money by contracting. We have to cut money, we have to, because we don't have it, okay, to the abundance in which we used to. And mainly because RDA went away, and that was 800,000, okay? So, we have to look at actuals, and actuals, and what we're saving, you got one, two, three areas. We're saving 153,523, we have to look at places to cut. She is saying that there is a possibility of 35,000. She is saying that there is a possibility of thirty-five thousand. If you go in and you extend that out for the whole eighteen months, that's not an actuality. That's just a possibility that's not even happening.
Well, I can't, I can't look into a crystal ball that well and say what's going to happen to the next round of employees that get laid off. I'd like to be able to say they're all going to leave on Tuesday. On Wednesday, they're going to report to a new job. But I can't do that. So, you have to factor in the risk of having to pay that unemployment insurance.
And right now, the factor is thirty-five thousand.
That's, that's, I agree.
Yes.
Can I say something? Were most of these positions vacant anyway? I mean, weren't these positions vacated by attrition?
Uh, let me think here.
The assistant city, assistant city manager, we never had anybody in that position.
Right, right.
Bill Martell's?
He wasn't laid off.
Anybody who laid off?
But we never filled that position. If we had filled that position, we would have had to pay unemployment insurance. But we didn't, we hired contractors, so...
Well, let's look prospectively and look at what's in the proposal in this budget. There are layoffs proposed in this budget, and just rounding off, is there four or five?
There are, actually, it depends on the action that the council ends up taking.
Of course, we haven't decided, and we could...
Right.
I agree. But as proposed, it's like four or five employees.
Well, let me look at the net.
And Steve, you've got to look at the long term too. I mean, this is just one year. If you look at long term, then you've got the long-term liability of healthcare and pension costs.
I, I understand that, but we're not looking long term. Because if we're looking long term, then you have to get past the difficulties we're in now and start looking at changing and hiring employees, right? I mean, we're dealing with what we have right now.
I, you know, I'm just looking at, looking at that, and I, you know, I'm a numbers person. I, I would too agree that, looking at that, we can't predict who's being laid off and who's going to find a job right away. But where I, where I get concerned is seeing how the economic climate is and the job climate is, and seeing unemployment drastically go up. That's, I, I think that should be included in there, just so we have the exact, exact ballpark numbers on.
Yeah, we agree the benefit's going to be there. That's not a debate here.
That was just my concern. I, I see that, and I, I questioned it because I think, why, what happens if they can't go find another job? Because in this position that they were laid off, hypothetically, they would be going to, most likely, to another city trying to find employment. And if they are, and scrapped with budget battles, then, I'm just, that's, those are my concerns. That's...
Well, let me just, what, when, first of all, this is on a year basis. So, when we're showing thirty-five thousand, that's what it is for roughly eighteen months. So, it'd be for twelve months. And also, you have to add it in, not take it out. So, all it does is make the number higher. It doesn't make it lower. When, what happens when people are laid off, they, EDD sends us a bill for that you guys actually see on the check register that we have to, have to pay. And it depends on, and we have reset our UI rates. And so, I think what Steve is getting at is he's saying that the money is set aside in the UI account, and so, that should be counted toward it. Is that where you're trying to go with this?
Sort of. I think when you say that it would increase the cost savings by going to contract employees is absolutely not correct. Absolutely not correct. If we have to pay unemployment insurance for those employees getting laid off, that thirty-five thousand dollars per employee under a worst-case scenario going forward, that cost isn't triggered by the city employee continuing employment. It's triggered by being laid off. So, you add that cost to the contract employee column.
Aren't those positions that are being laid off, aren't going to be replaced by contractors, are they?
Yeah, they're, well, it's a good question. I mean, past history says that people are going to get replaced. I just, I'm saying, the way it's being explained is misrepresenting the cost difference between contract employees and city employees. And I'll just say that clearly and leave it at that. That's all, so we can move forward.
I just want to take exception to what you're saying. I think he's misrepresenting the skill and integrity of the city manager. I think the city manager has taken bacon and the city finance director. They have put a whole lot of skill, a whole lot effort. You asked for more specifics, they gave you more specifics. I'm one that says, no, we are not looking to, to get rid of employees in Fillmore if we could help it. But we can't help it. I don't know if you noticed, Vista Bus may be not running in the other months because the company went bankrupt. Their, the state is bankrupt. The country owes more money than we do. The fact of the matter is, you're trying, I, I feel like you're trying to lay blame on the management, and that's not, now, I'm speaking to the public. That's just not the case. We're in hard times, and this city has got less income than any other city in the town. And, and our management has worked hard to save positions when they could. But we're at the point where the only way you can make ends meet is we, now we have to cut services, and more services. And we're trying not to cut super critical services, i.e. sheriff, fire, and keeping the doors open. So, this is just misrepresentation as far as I'm concerned, Mr. Conway. I think, I, I've sat here for three years, and, and I watched you give your opinions about finances and whatnot. And I want to say, the sewer system overpayment and people having to pay lots of money is partly your responsibility. Having paid one million six hundred thousand dollars for a skate park, and the rest of the park didn't get done, that was mismanagement. We don't have mismanagement now. We did have mismanagement. Paying nine hundred thousand dollars for a bus stop and finding that it was too short and has to be retrofitted and go higher for that bus stop, that was a mismanagement. And that was some of the people that you say have institutional knowledge. Institutional knowledge is over, over, overdone. Many works in this city, and we are indebted, indebted, indebted because of it. So, when I hear you speak incorrectly and trying to lay blame on this financial crisis on the management, you are dead wrong. Because the problem is with the whole state and city to city, and they're trying their best to make it work. When you were mayor, when you, and other times, money was rolling in, and it got spent pretty big. Money's not rolling in, and you can't find any big-ticket items that this council has paid for. The biggest ticket items we've paid for is trying to help El Dorado keep their homes.
Mayor, I want to comment like this. I'm going to say this. You should pray that you have mismanagement again as it was when this council was turned over in two thousand and eight, when you had general fund reserves of two-point-three million dollars. You should pray for such mismanagement going forward. Because that mismanagement, as you describe it, has saved your backside. And you're right, you've spent money on things like El Dorado, when there's no benefit to the city. We're going to be involved in another lawsuit that we don't have money to pay for. You were cautioned against that, you ignored it. I'm sure that would be the last time.
There's clearly a difference of opinion here.
Thank you, there is.
And although, I guess I would have to say I agree with Jamie.
I'm sure you do.
And that, and, and one thing that's, you know, Jamie made a comment that the money was rolling in and it being spent. I want to make the point that the money wasn't rolling in. It was all on a credit card.
Yes.
And this is...
That's flat out wrong! It wasn't. The money was in the general fund reserves, it's been drawn down.
We did have money in the general fund.
You're drawing down on five hundred thousand dollars, about half a million dollars in this budget from that mismanagement. It's ridiculous.
Well, we do have to give credit for people putting money in the reserve fund, but nobody's...
Talk of misrepresentation.
All right, stop arguing, and let's let the city manager continue with our presentation. We're not here to fight. I'm not either.
Well, and wastewater.
Let's go.
Okay, there is a march, uh, two thousand and twelve, the CPI increase of two percent plus five percent, which is the amount that was authorized up to the, what was in the two-eighteen hearing. So, if this goes through, effective July first, two thousand and twelve, the new rate would be approximately ninety-thousand, ninety thousand. I've got that on the brain. Ninety dollars and thirty-eight cents. So, it's going from eighty-four forty-six to ninety thirty-eight, or a difference of about five ninety-two per month. And the reason that we're proposing to increase the rate, and again, for everybody, as we talked about earlier, this is subject to what the council tells us to do, what the council considerations is, it's because our bond rating had decreased. We are, in order to get to the ninety thirty-eight, we're covering that by using a million dollars from the rate stabilization fund, and that's what it's there for. We only have two million left there. And then, if we don't increase the rates over the next year, few years, rates are going to have to jump by at least eighteen percent when the fund is gone. So, and some of the things that are going on behind the scenes is that we had, as a result of a settlement with Harstone, there was a million dollars that was deposited in sewer divs. Originally, when we talked to the auditors, their perspective was that we had to keep the money on the deposit, and then draw against it if building happened. We talked, we went back and forth with them. And what, where it is now, and we have it in writing from them, is that they're saying it can be used to offset a rate increase. And so, if this council is inclined to do that, one percent of the rate increase equals approximately fifty-one thousand. So, you just double it for, two percent is like one oh two, three percent is one fifty-three. The drawback is to use, even though we can use this money to buy down that rate increase of seven percent, these are one-time funds. So, what that means is that you're using, we're using these funds to take some of the pressure off of residents. But then, when the funds are gone, they're just going to have to jump back up. So, that's the drawback to using, there's an advantage to using them, but there's also, people have to be aware of what the potential downside could be.
Where in the budget is that million dollars? I couldn't find it. A million dollars from Harstone, as far as alignment?
It is a deferred revenue account. And so, deferred revenue accounts aren't usually shown in the budget. Some of the money is shown because what Glenda did is, and Glenda, can you give me the page number, please? Is it...
Revenue?
Right, where you're bringing it in. I think it's you're bringing in the sewer budgets, like sixty thousand. What happens is that she talks to Steve Stewart and says, okay, how much building activity do you think you're going to get? So, she, that calculation was done until you put the money in. So, that's the normal...
Yeah, I, I get the prospective estimated growth in calculating the dividend budget if those are already in here. But specifically, the one million dollars from Harstone, there should be, at least in my way of thinking, a million-dollar pot somewhere in this budget, and I just don't see it.
And it's not there. The original, when I talked to the auditors, they're, Harstone paid the money for, in advance, against building permits that are going to be issued in the future.
Sewer divs.
Sewer divs.
Right.
Normally, what happens is you, that revenue is not recognized until the building permit is issued. Because at the time the building permit is issued, it says the div fee should be twelve thousand dollars. We then take the twelve thousand dollars from cash, from deferred revenue. We then budget it and put it in revenue. It's very similar to what we're doing with the sales tax. We have the million six sitting in deferred revenue, but we don't get to recognize that as revenue until the state says, this is how much you bid in sales tax. I then decrease the deferred revenue, put the money over in revenue. Well, that's the same philosophy that originally the auditors told me that we needed to do with the million dollars, that it wasn't to be recognized as revenue because it's against future building permits.
Even though we received the money in December, we helped with escrow for...
Correct, even though we received it in December.
We received a million dollars in December.
Correct.
Okay.
And so, after the, you brought up the question, we went back to them, and then I said, okay, originally, we said, this is, again, it's money paid now against future building permits. So, five years from now, Harstone comes in and says, I want credit for this twelve thousand dollars. And we're not going to be able to give them credit at that point because we've given them credit now. So, somebody has to keep track of how much we're going to take out of that million dollars and use now so that when they pay their building permits three years from now, five years from now, they get credit for already having paid that money. So, from an accounting standpoint, normally, you do not recognize that revenue until building permits are issued.
So, normally, you're saying it essentially is revenue that's off the budget, though it's acting as a trust account, and it gets booked when we draw down on it?
Correct. And so, from a, I'm sorry, from a balance sheet standpoint, you would say, this is your cash of a million dollars. Your liability is your deferred revenue, which offsets that because that money technically isn't available until it becomes revenue. So, you know, Steve and, Steve Ward and I work together, and he says, I estimate that we're going to issue X number of permits this year, which would equate to a certain dollar amount. Now, if some of those permits happen to be the Harstone homes, then that money would be recognized.
This is for the last phase of the Harstone build-out, though? The stuff on the very east end?
That's what I'm saying. So, you're, you're going to use that money now, and if the last phase doesn't develop for ten or twenty years...
Right.
Then, you're going to get no revenue ten years from now.
Understood. City manager said that we could consider, thankfully, with the attorneys or the auditors, that we could use that for...
Right, because I pointed out that...
...rate stabilization, if we so choose.
Right.
And do those deferred revenue accounts show up on the audit?
Yes, reported. They show up on your balance sheet as deferred revenue. So, when you get the audit report, it'll say cash, you know, a million, two-hundred thousand, deferred revenue, a million dollars.
It just doesn't show up in the budget?
It does not show up in the budget, but it does in the...
Okay. Well, and I appreciate you guys really getting together with the auditors on every off, you know, because these are special, special circumstances that, that you're dealing with as far as booking that, you know, taking that million dollars in, as far as in the sales tax thing. Those are, those are unusual circumstances that require auditor participation. So, I appreciate you guys going to them. Instead of just saying, well, let's just do it this way. You have to do, go through the auditors, so I appreciate that. Yes, because otherwise, if I budgeted it, and they said, wait a minute, this isn't revenue, you can't do this, and wouldn't allow me to do it from a legal auditing standpoint, and I've done that, then we would all be in trouble. Because again, we've used that money to pay for operations or debt service and from a budget standpoint. And if they came back and said, you can't do that, we would have to come up with another source of funds.
Okay, so that's one of the things that we'd like your direction on tonight. For water, the proposed fee increase is the March CPI, 2% plus 2%, which equals 4. So the increase, instead of being July 1st, is going to be January 1st. We staggered them that way on purpose, so first of all, usually water usage is down in January, and so also it doesn't hit people all at one time. So the change in the rate is $1.38 a month, so it's going from 34.43 to 35.81. That's what's proposed. One of the things, if you look in the budget on the, in the water section, you will see that in essence, United Water has tripled their charge to us over the last three years. And part of that is, so it's gone to almost $300,000. So after about 100, and now it's at 300. And part of that is because of the regulations. They're hiring biologists, they're hiring engineers to comply with some of the state, new state regulations. So that's showing up as, and that's a big, big cost increase for us. Okay, there have been some questions about the utility bill aging report, so I'd just like to go through those. In the active accounts, we have about 509,000 on the books. For hydrants, PMA owes us about 11,563, and we need to collect that from them. We also have accounts that have been suspended, as Griffin and a few others. Griffin was actually most of it, about half of it. And then we have closed accounts, which date back to 2002. So what the city staff is going to be proposing to do in the next month or so is we'll be bringing you something which proposes to you write off those accounts, all those closed ones. The city staff, Glenda has been having her finance staff go through and call people to try, we sent out letters, she's also called, had a staff member call people to try and bring in revenue from those closed accounts. So we have tried to get back as much revenue as we can, but at a certain point, we may not be able to do that. So in terms of...
One quick thing, in the email that I sent to Gail and Yvonne about the active accounts, over half a million dollars in active accounts that are past due.
We're going to cover that in a second.
Okay, thank you.
You're welcome. So what we did is, as we've been going along this year, we have been updating the council about the, what's going on with these accounts. We did it in the fall, and we did it at mid-year, and we also did it in, through this 2013 process. And as I said, about 250,000 of that amount, that 700 and I think it's 49, is from, dates back to 2002. We have that staff person. And so one of the suggestions was a collection agency. And on the collection agency, the way that it works is that they charge either a, on a per-account basis, so what they do is they say, okay, I'm going to charge you 40 or 50% of what we collect, and that's going to be my fee for that account. Or they also do it on a flat sum, and they say, okay, it's going to be about 10 bucks per account, we'll go out and try and get that money for you, but it's going to be about 10 bucks an account. And one of the things we wanted to talk with you about is having a collection agency won't solve the entire, thank you, won't solve the problem, because what's really going, we're not addressing the underlying issue. And so the underlying issue is that, is the length of time that the bill, that people have to pay the bill, in essence, that's really the simplest way to say it. And then, so it's the length of time that they have to pay the bill, and then on top of that, it's the amount of time before it becomes late. So one of the things that we should consider is tightening up on that practice. Originally, the city council did that because with rates jumping very high, there was a big impact on the consumers, and they were, you were trying to lessen that impact. And as we continue to raise the rates, of course, that is probably going to increase. So I think we need to talk about changing that practice on how much time we're giving people. We may, we also talked about an amnesty period, and maybe do it on some sort of sliding scale, but then going into a lien process for bills, because that may be, if it's put on the person's property tax, then before anything, the city tends to be protected on that, because generally speaking, our liens are up there at the top. So those are some of the things that we need to talk about in terms of what we're going to do, because we're having difficulties in, we need to bring down that amount. And it's not really fair to all the rate payers, because they're going to have to pick up, everybody else who's paying their bills is going to have to pick up those costs for the people who aren't paying their bills. Okay, solid ways, we pretty much went through this. There weren't any rate increases through 2014, and this is with B.J. Harrison. They're also asking for a 10-year contract with two 5-year renewals. They asked for that, as I said, you've seen this slide from the original budget presentation on the... They said that they have to make a capital investment, so that's why they would like to have a longer contract. I did point out to them that 20 years is a long time for the city to commit to, but that we would be, it was 10, 2...
Five.
Right. And they want to go from two faulty goods pickup to one. And they said to offset that, what they would do is that if you're a resident and you have to call twice a year to have them come to your house and pick up a mattress or a refrigerator or something like that. And they also, because they know that when you decrease faulty good pickup, you typically end up also having an increase in illegal dumping. And so they are saying, will you, you just call us and we'll take care of that illegal dumping, and then of course that's within the city limits, and that they will also help to pick up after special events. And as we've been talking about, they have offered to help pick up trash on Central and in the city parks. And so that concludes my overview for some of the issues that are before us tonight.
All right, thank you. Would it be okay with the council if we take a little break before we continue discussion? Thank you. Okay, calling the meeting back to order, so we're going to continue with our budget item, and I do have a speaker card. This is what public... And if there's anybody in the public who wishes to speak, please fill out a speaker card, and we'll call you forward. The first one I have is for Cindy Blatt.
Good evening, Mayor and Council. My name is Cindy Blatt, I live at 1186 Oak Avenue. And I don't know if you're going to go through each budget item, but...
I think what we're going to do, what I'd like to do is just, you start with, go through each department and then look at any changes that the council might have.
Well, so if you want me to say...
If you have some suggestions or changes, please...
Well, obviously, I'm lucky in that the swimming pool budget, and I have some comments and questions. First, I want to say thank you to whoever approached American Water and came up with their, their agreeing to provide chlorine or chemicals for the pool, and also, yes, maintenance costs, so a wonderful thing.
Cindy, you can thank the mayor.
The mayor, thank the mayor.
And thanks to American Vaughn and American Water, too, for...
So on the swimming pool budget, on the first part of it, the description, it states that the pool is regularly rented by a private club.
Page 114 in your budget. Sorry, the lower pages.
And the private swim club hasn't been renting the pool since August or September of 2011. And so I don't know how much revenue was built into the budget for them paying rent, but since they aren't there, it would just be adding to the deficit if you're not collecting any money from that.
Cindy, it looks like account 260 says swim team renting, there's zero for this year's budget.
Well, this is where we got into a little discussion before, because I was told that the finance director and the city, and the city manager thought that had to do with the Filmer High School swim team.
Oh, okay.
In our last mini-year of...
Well, let's let Glenda clarify for us.
If you look at the item that's through 221, it says pool rental slash club swim. That's where your revenue, this, the swim team rental was the school. So there's... They were never going to pay money anyway, but I'm saying for now, the private club does not rent the pool, and if it's built into item, the 221 line item, then you're just making a deficit there, because they're not going to pay anything because they're not there.
So we need to make a $700 adjustment in that line?
Well, I don't know, because that also has to do with pool rental for partners. So you need to determine... Okay, so thank you. Then also under revenue is the runners' club. And I understand why the runners' club was there before, but I really don't understand why it's under the swimming pool budget now. I believe it should be under the recreation budget, because they're not going through the pool anymore. Lifeguards aren't opening the gate for people to come through, so I just, I don't, I think that needs to be known somewhere else, is my opinion. Also, as far as looking for other revenue sources, some of the things that are charged to the pool are things like landscaping and, let's see, sorry, tennis courts maintenance and repairs. And I think that the tennis players should start forking over some money to use the courts, so that they're contributing to the revenue for the pool budget.
I will tell you, as a tennis player, we do maintain the courts. Mr. Wally Shafel, he throws the courts every week and sweeps them. I, per se, paid for the net replacement, and so the tennis people are maintaining the tennis courts already.
Okay, but there's also landscaping built into that, so... Then if you go into expenses, there's a line item for active net, and that has to do with the computer program at the pool, and the pool, the computer, the computer at the pool, since it reopened, the pool reopened in February, that computer has hardly been functional at all. I don't know if it's currently working right now, but the last time I was at the pool was probably Friday, I think, and it wasn't working, they didn't even have it there. So you're paying money for software that can't even be used. So I need, I think you need to think about, is it really worth spending that money?
Let's ask the... I think there's plans to replace that computer.
Yeah, there is. Does everybody have an idea when it's going to be replaced?
Well, right now, what we've been doing is going through, we had some issues with James at City Hall. The person, Bill, knows all about it, and he's been getting in computers, and he's putting them together. So I will ask him when approximately it can happen, and he's very well aware that the one, the computer and the one that's there can't be...
I know it's a work, but you're wasting money because you're not using it, so anyway, go on.
And after this, you guys order some new computers, and they come in within the last week or so, and he has also good things to add.
Okay, and then my next question is, under the pool district administration, and I'm curious, it's just a question, I'm curious why it's so high. Then under utilities, I have a couple comments there. I talked to Councilman Gonzalez about the, about possibly doing some type of solar system at the pool to get the utilities down. And I just started to approach him. I noticed there's, there's a lot of solar activity, if you want to call it that, in the county, and getting solar systems in to cut down on costs for, not necessarily heating the pool, but electrical, to bring the electricity cost down. Also, there are decorative lights at the pool, and the lights at the pool have always been an issue because the city, the pool staff does not have any control. A few things have been fixed, but the city staff has no control of how they program the lights, so they can't do anything about certain things. For instance, there are decorative lights, there's about five or six decorative lights that are around the play area, and they're on during the day. And a lot of times, the parking lot lights are on, you know, just because they haven't been adjusted. Somebody needs to get on top of it and adjust it.
So they're on timer?
They're on some type of timing system, yes. So the decorative lights, the last time, I think it was, like I said, Friday, I went over, and it was about 4:00 and they were on. And I don't know when they go on, because I'm not there, so I don't know when they go on, and I don't know how long they need to stay on. But they really don't need to be on, because there's security lights that come on at a certain time, and then there's also the big overhead lights, that when they're using the pool at night, they can use those. And then, I guess that's it. Thank you.
Thank you. Staff will check into that and make the unit adjustments. Right?
Got it.
All right. I do have another speaker card for Mr. Everisto Barajas.
Yes, my name is Everisto Barajas, and my address is 421 Central Avenue. Mayor Wyper, City Council. You know, I haven't been here in a while. I was on the council from 1996 to 2004. And I take exception, I mean, just a few points, and it has to do with the budget. I'm not, I'm not here to criticize anyone, I'm here to see what I see, and I want the city to prosper, and I know we're in trouble, okay, in more than one way. And I do take exception to some of the comments that were made, that I am one of those big spenders, okay? For eight years, we balanced our budget, and as a council, we set up a 40% of operating cost reserve, or is that? Okay? This is to end all the criticism by our previous councils. Please take responsibility for your own, okay? Please take responsibility for your own, okay? Now that I'm here, I'm seeing why some of these problems exist. A city works or operates on the accrual system, not on the cash basis. It's not like an individual where you get money, you spend it, and when you do your taxes, whatever you got in that year and whatever expenses you had, that's it. A city plans. I was disappointed when I saw your agenda. I hadn't seen one of these in years, actually. Let me give a little structure of the way our agenda was set up. On every item, we had a goal. We had two workshops that were just dedicated to goal setting. I wish you would get back to that. How can you plan for the future if you don't know where you've been and where you are today? Like I said, if you work on that goal-setting procedure, what you do on each of your items is, is this one of our goal-setting items? And if not, fine. But if it is one of those items, have we progressed on that? And if not, why not? It's easy to put blame. We were at a time where the economy was good, but our council also did not carelessly get into arguments that were not beneficial to the city. We did not have any ground law violations. We did not have, as mentioned by Councilman Steve Conway, we didn't have this issue with what's happening now in the lawsuit with the mobile home park. We got into, you know, we got into some lawsuits, but most of those lawsuits that we got into were not because of the council. It was because, I call it, the normal, the normal current of what would happen in the city, you know, certain losses with some developers with, but not because of the council that was careless. I want our city to prosper. I want you guys to prosper. I want you to do well for the city. But I hope you'll take this at word. My last item I want to talk about, because I was approached by certain people, people still approach me after years I'd been off the council. And I get stopped in the market, they even visit me in my office, and they want to talk about things. And I had a few people come to my office this week about the bathrooms. What are we getting to? It's not just the fact that you're eliminating the service of the bathrooms. You're not providing that service to those individuals that need it the most. I have a home, I have a backyard. I think everyone has a home and has a big backyard. And if you don't, you know, I'm sorry, but the people that need that park and need those services maybe are not as fortunate as we are. Our kids, are we not promoting better health for our kids? What better way to have parks and have those necessities? I looked at the budget, and the amount of money we're going to be saving is insignificant to the benefits that we'll be getting from that. So please reconsider that. It might be in your budget. Budgets can be changed. So please reconsider that, okay? And that's really all I wanted to say.
All right, thanks for your comments. Is there anybody else who wishes to comment on this island? Have any other speaker cards? If you're welcome to come up. Any suggestions? Okay, if nobody has any more suggestions, then we'll give the council's suggestions and recommendations. And I guess we could start with the general fund and kind of go through any changes that, any additional changes or recommendations that the other council members might have.
Not, Mayor Vamela, not so much change, mainly a question for clarity. And clicking at page 25 of the budget, this is under the general fund, property tax secured, we're anticipating $408,000. And the unsecured property tax, we're estimating at $35,000. When I make a comparison to the last actibles we had in 2011, property taxes were higher in 2011. That can be attributable to the economy, I get it. But our unsecured property taxes were only $6,900. So we're showing a decrease in property tax and yet an increase in unsecured property tax.
Okay.
We're not, we're talking a difference of about $24,000, $25,000. Are you attributing that to just more goods on the shelf, more inventory?
I was facing on what we've actually received to date from the county on unsecured.
Okay.
I don't know what happened between, because 2010, you're at $30,000, but 11, it's down to $6,900.
Right.
And what I don't know is if somebody put the unsecured property taxes in the secured line. Because they could have done that, somebody could have.
The supplemental shows a spike in 2011 above 2010, so.
Right, and so the money could have, could have gotten into the wrong account and.
Okay. All right, that answers the question. The $35,000 is based on actibles from the county projected.
Projected for this year, right. And hopefully that will continue to next year.
Yeah.
As I've seen, that doesn't always happen.
I hope it does.
All right, thanks. Any other questions on this page? I did have a couple of comments, actually, and that was on the transient lodging tax, what we call TOT. We're showing that at 82. Is that realistic?
It's realistic based on what we've received to date this year.
Okay. Well, if that's the case, then I would like to suggest that the council, to the council, that we give some of that to the tourism bureau. You know, as you know, the tourism bureau lost its funding, I think, two or three years ago, Santa Paula withdrew its funding. And then last year, we withdrew our funding. We did the in-kind rent to Fillmore Western Railway to do the admin. But there are still a lot of expenses as far as marketing costs. And I want to believe that, that the work that the tourism bureau has done has had an impact on that TOT, and that's why we're seeing it go up. It has gone up in Santa Paula and Ventura County. I gave a presentation to Santa Paula a couple of weeks ago, and their council is interested in rejoining the bureau and hopefully making some kind of contribution again. So I would hope that whatever, if Santa Paula's willing to do that, that we would be willing to do that and recognize the value of tourism to Fillmore and take some of that TOT and give it back to the tourism bureau for.
Mark, go on.
Thank you. I would say whatever Santa Paula's willing to do, but maybe $5,000.
I, I'll be real frank, and I appreciate what the tourism bureau is doing and Fillmore Western's doing. And clearly, we're benefiting from that effort and the activities that are going on. But at this given time, I cannot support diverting general fund tax revenue, which has come into the city, to that agency at this time. I understand the desire, but I just, I just can't support it.
Okay, that's fine. But I will say that that is how most cities fund their tourism with the TOT. That's what it's usually earmarked for. And most cities do give all of it.
Question would be, does Fillmore Western know that more people staying over, do we know how much this is, you know? How can we, how much can we attribute to tourism?
Well, I'd say at least half of it. And they have seen, since the, since the office is staffed full, almost full-time now, there is a lot of traffic coming in. So in addition to the train people traffic, there is traffic of people just coming in saying, what is there to do in Fillmore? What is there to do in Harrah's Valley? So they've seen a big increase in that. The website's been redesigned, and there's a lot of hits coming in. The state has said that, and I think I said this to you guys a couple of weeks ago, maybe not, that, that there were 49 million people from China applying for travel visas, and 50% of them want to come to California. So we need to get, we need to be marketed worldwide, and that's how we do that, by funding those, those marketing efforts.
So we're seeing a $17,000 increase from last year. That's amazing. I would be open to give some money to, I mean, you take some money and make money if you think that. How much was the tourism bureau funded last year?
It wasn't. But they, before that, they were getting $25,000 from Fillmore and $25,000 from Santa Paula. So lost all funding and is now, you know, we did a budget for two years, so it's really tight. There's no expense other than marketing, global and state marketing.
It used to be RDA funds.
Exactly.
Then when the RDA funds went away.
Just, for comparison, we're sitting here talking about closing park restrooms for the largest holiday of the year because of funding problems. And we're considering diverting money that could be earmarked for parks or goes into the pot that the park maintenance pulls from and diverting it to tourism.
We're diverting into economic development, which we had described as one of our goals.
If I could just clarify something, please. Actually, at the last meeting, the council gave direction that they wanted the park restrooms to stay open. So that's what we're, the assumption staff is, is operating under. So it becomes a question of how do we do that? But as far as we know, one way or the other, the city is keeping those restrooms open, either with volunteers or through some other, some other means.
Okay, thank you. All right. Any comments on tourism here?
Well, I understand both sides of the issue. As I mentioned in that previous meeting, I strongly believe that we have to have a diverse economy. Part of diverse economy is branching out with a, with a bold agenda for tourism. We have a lot to offer. Sorry. We have a lot to offer for our cities. So I do, I do recognize that. I do have some recommendations at the end of the meeting as, as to items that I would like to have the council look at, such as fee schedules, to try to generate more revenue. I see this as a part success. So I'm not opposed to it, but I think we need to be open to other suggestions to, to secure revenue for the city. So I'm trying to be, you know, lay my ground in the middle, but I also am cognizant that we have to make some changes elsewhere within the budget. So there's my comments.
Okay, but we still have to decide whether we're willing to put some money to. So, I mean, for instance, for the film commission, they bring in money, and then we turn around and budget money for them because they have expenses to fill more. In this case, your transient lodging tax is increased because more people come to Fillmore. Therefore, I think we should give a percent, 90%, we should give a token to tourism because tourism is bringing in $17,000 increase in one year when we didn't even fund it, our funding from the last two previous years. So I think there should be some kind of stipend given to that. As we, as we said, we're looking forward, we're going to keep the bathrooms open one way or the other. So what number would you be open to?
Well, first of all, I'm not in favor of closing any bathroom, and I'm not in favor of closing any parks. I think that is the hundred, the council's 100% agree on that. As far as the number, I, you know, I'm not, at this time, I'm not comfortable in saying. I understand, I'm open to the idea. It's an investment that will pay off in the future. So I believe Mayor Washburn mentioned $5,000, correct? I will confirm that.
Thanks for your suggestion.
Okay, I would agree with that.
And also, I want to place a contingent on Santa Paula, too.
With the understanding that Santa Paula will also decline some money?
We're going to ask them.
Okay, if they don't.
Who else probably should point something?
Okay, I would add, I would request the following. If Santa Paula does decline, this proposal will, hopefully, it's going to be a proposal. And I would like it brought back to the council so then we can go back to square one and talk about it. Because we're assuming they possibly will, but if not, then, you know, again, Fillmore's being strapped with taking on.
They, they express. They, they saw the value for them.
And I, I understand that, I just, for the, out of fairness of everyone in our community, I think that's important.
Okay. And then I also, moving on, moving on, as far as the revenue on franchise fees, I think I suggested that we maybe audit a couple of those franchise fees that have stayed flat while other franchise fees have increased. So please staff can take a look at that. Well, Edison, my concern about Edison is it has stayed fairly flat, and with the sewer plant online, that's like a quarter million dollars a year increase. So I would hope to see, see that going up, too.
Because we're using that.
Right, and I don't know what the formula is, you know, there's probably some kind of formula of 1% or 1%. I don't know what that is. Staff can take a look at it? Thank you. Let's move on to some other pages.
What's a JAG grant?
Which choices?
Yeah, I think we had just, was, was the JAG grant before with game or not?
No, action.
J, the, well, that was years past, in 2010. I was just wondering, I do know you got some sort of grant recently, it's not the JAGs. What was?
Correct. The Burn JAG grant is a grant that we received different monies for police equipment and different things. That's a, it's a grant that we don't even have to work for, per se, I don't have to submit any written documentation, and it's dispersed to different areas. We did not get that this year. The county did in some areas, so since our station includes county deputies as well, we're getting a little bit of monies from that Burn JAG grant for some county equipment and vests, et cetera. But that, yeah, that's slowly been discontinued. And the other grant, you mentioned, the CALGRIP grant is what we just got.
Yes, you were explaining to the public what that was. I'm trying to beat the drum for you.
The CALGRIP grant is a California gang reduction. The CALGRIP grant is the California Gang Reduction Intervention and Prevention Program. And it's a statewide grant, actually funded by CAL EMA. And in doing so, we, as a sheriff's office, we applied on the behalf of the city of Fillmore, given the severe financial crisis. That grant is $250,000 over a two-year period. Half of that monies has to be designated towards community-based organizations. That's the intervention, the prevention aspect of it. The other half of it goes towards suppression and enforcement efforts, i.e. police type of activity to suppress our hardcore gang members, especially those that commit repeated offenses. So, we work together. In fact, we've been meeting regularly. We already got it on track. And what, because we applied for it, because the problem's here, we're going to, you know, one of the proposals is to cut our only gang officer. And in doing that, we have to still address the violence and gang issues in the city. And that will help us at least to offset the loss, if council does vote that way, the loss of our gang officer.
Thank you for your efforts.
Sure. I'd like to talk about the.
Tell me something, Sharon.
Page 26, account 86, building plan check fees and building construction permits. So, I look at the anticipated building construction permits and projected $85,000. And I assume that $80,000 is based on last good numbers received into the budget, Glenda? That's still an estimate under that amended column?
Yeah, that's your amended budget. That's not the estimate.
Okay, so the last good number we had was last year, 2011 actual, $30,000. And 2012, '13 budget, we're showing $85,000 off of, doubling increase in building construction permits. That's part A. So, maybe we can just address part A and then we'll go to part B.
We're anticipating a significant permit issuance of our tracks and the old Griffin tracks, Capital Pacific. We'll probably be pulling an additional 10 permits next year. I anticipate Williams Homes will probably be pulling a neighborhood of 30 permits. So, that is our lion's share of permits. I, I sense that, based on our counter activity with people looking at various projects, that we're going to have their uptick in, in permit issuance this, this coming year.
Right.
And so, the plan check fee is down, is typically about 75%. The reason why is because of our significant track development. Of course, we're not getting any plan check fees for that. We've already collected those upfront.
Okay, so we have an increase in projected building.
Yes.
I agree with you. I think things are going to start taking off a little bit. But yet, we're showing a decrease for the plan check fees and we're projecting $35,000 in the coming budget.
And the reasoning for that is these subdivisions have already paid for their plan review. So, we're just issuing permits off of those.
Okay. Isn't the Chevron project, isn't their plan check fee roughly $30,000?
Well, the Chevron project is really a planning process and I don't anticipate that to get to a point of building permits for several years.
They would have to go to the lab, though, anywhere.
Yeah, it's a full transportation. I would, I would anticipate that's a two or three-year process. And what you'll see first will be planning fees and then engineering development fees and then moving on from that. There, there is a slight possibility that, that we could start to see some development in the Hearthstone project as well later on, maybe in the summer of next year because we're actually starting to do improvements out there, second improvements. So, and so they may be looking at starting to appeal some of those lots off, so.
Okay.
The potential is quite high and I'm somewhat encouraged by what, what we're seeing. Clearly, I have to get my crystal ball out and sometimes I guess right, sometimes I don't. But I've been doing this for 33 years, so it's usually pretty good.
So, engineering fees, we're, we're showing a 50% decrease. And that's, once again, because it's your anticipated development within the areas that have already been approved in late this lineup, I don't know.
Those engineering fees are, are really for the encroachment permits and those kinds of projects that come through.
Those are already taken care of on that.
The majority of the larger development is all done with accounts and so we charge our time and it's those accounts.
Okay.
All right.
Go ahead and hear about the optimism in the building.
Okay, next, next item.
This question is fireworks fees. We're going from $1,000 to $13,000.
Fireworks were formally budgeted in the redevelopment agency. And so, we're now moving all those fees and the cost for the fireworks show to the general fund.
Just moving it back, okay. All right, thank you.
Next.
Page 27, sale of real property. We're showing a real property sale of $60,000. Do we have an idea of what we're considering selling?
Vehicles. Vehicles.
Vehicles.
Vehicles, does that include the dump, dump truck, the trash truck, or just regular?
What we did is we just took a guestimate and put it in there.
All right.
We still have some surplus vehicles. And then, of course, with more staff reductions, we'll have more. We also have that trash truck that we are going to be disposing of. So, we just made a guestimate on the $60,000.
Okay.
And does, does that $60,000 include the monetary value of the vehicles that are earmarked for the school district? We'd have to account for it there, right, somewhere?
No, what we would end up doing is just bringing that item to you, just like when we are giving surplus fire equipment that we buy for a dollar, that the city council can choose to not, can choose to, to give that asset to another jurisdiction. We have, we have some vehicles in mind. That's preliminary, actually, one or two conversations with the school district, but that has not been ironed out yet.
Okay. Next. I, I do have a question on page 53, Chief Frigo. I skipped the 11 in between. If anybody else has something in between there, you know?
I, actually, I do, on page four and five. So, page five. At the end of 2013 budget, we have an estimated ending balance in the park project of $596,000. And what money was that originally earmarked for a project?
Is that 464?
Yeah.
I'm doing some investigating on that because originally there was like $2 million transferred from the wastewater treatment plant to Fund 464. And then there was also bond proceeds transferred in from the RDA. So, one of the things that I need to look at is to see what were those proceeds transferred in for and what were they to be used for.
Okay. And the same question basically applies to the corporate fire station, Fund 490, half a million dollars?
There was money transferred in 2010 from RDA bond proceeds to the corporate yard account. And that money is still there. We haven't done anything with it based on the issues that's going, that are going on with the RDA right now.
So, the RDA owned, uh, both of those pots or one?
No, that's what we have had. The issue, remember last year, we talked about making some transfers until we figured out what was going on with the RDA. So, this is where the mine's parked. So, that's where we are.
Okay.
So, and what's the total? So, those is two?
1.1 million.
Yeah, 1.1 million that may be earmarked RDA.
Right now, or it's general fund money? Is what we're saying?
No, it's not general fund monies. But we have to, what we have to look at is to see what kind of expenditures were made out of those projects in previous years to see whether or not, what other sources of income were used so that? What we do is we're working with the successor agency attorneys on this. And it, we may have to look at it in the context of the overall or part of the fix of 1.3, the minimum 1.3 that we owe because they're discounting our beginning balance. So, we have to just sit down, well, we already have had some preliminary conversations with the attorneys and that thing has been finalized. And also, secondly, as you know, we, we've appealed the state decision. They've told us, from their perspective, that they're not giving us that money. We appealed it, we haven't had a final determination. And then, so what we're doing is just trying to figure out how will all these pieces fit together if, worst case, they don't give us that money. They say, "Chie, that, you have to come up with that beginning balance yourself." There is legislation pending, as you've heard, that may sort through some of this. But again, we're all unfolding the pattern on it.
And those, any of that would come back to the city council, sure? Anything else between page five and 53? And, no, I have a question for Miko, if you don't mind. And this is just to educate me, if that's okay?
There's only two people that call me Chief Frigo and that's the captain of draft and the mayor.
I was wondering how we recruit our firefighters and paramedics, what the process is?
Yeah, that's a very good question. In the past, the volunteers were business owners, people that lived here within the city of Fillmore. And we would only recruit, we're talking years back, only recruit people that were able to part, or participate in the fire department if you did in Fillmore. As a matter of fact, in, when I started in the fire service in 1981, because I worked out of town, I was not allowed to be part of the fire department. It wasn't until 15 years later where Pat Astron was the chief at the time, was having so much difficulty getting people to volunteer because of, they say that the average volunteerism is about seven years and that, and that is shown to be true. If any of you guys are part of any organizations, roughly anywhere from four to seven years is usually the shelf life of a volunteer and they usually go, have had enough of whatever, they're volunteering and move on. I'm proud to say that I've been a volunteer for 27 years before I became chief. So, that's very unusual. We have a lot of individuals on our department that have longevity like that. But getting back to your question, what we do now is, for the paramedics, it's pretty much a word of mouth or we get applications as they fill out online. And when we start losing medics, we bring them in and we interview, we have an interview process. They have to do a live scan. We do a full background investigation on them because it's a liability for the city if we hire someone that doesn't fall or does not have a good background. For the firefighters, it's pretty much the same way. Now, let's get back to the medics. The way the medic program is, and I was explaining this to Linda today, is that I'm losing four medics probably by the end of July, actually by the end of June. They get hired on with full-time fire departments, which obviously get paid a lot more than the $275 or $250 that we're proposing to drop it to. That was the reason why we raised it originally to $300 is to be able to keep those paramedics on board because we were competing with not, not only overtime, but also losing them to other departments. We'll continue to lose them through other departments, but we have to compete with the overtime that their own companies pay, pay them to be, or to actually work the overtime. The problem is this, is that we have to hire level twos because they have to, they have to, there's a level one and a level two. A level one means that he has to work next to either a level two side by side or two level ones, in the case of an extreme emergency, two level twos can work together. Because we're a single-function paramedic program, we have to have level two paramedics. The criteria means, that criteria means that they have to have, so, they have to have so many intubations, so many contacts with advanced life support patients. There's a whole list of criterias and as a tiny span, they have to be, and work under those conditions to become a level two. So, it's, it's a, it's a big investment for these paramedics to have a level two to, and then also to, to retain them. As far as the firefighters, getting back to the firefighters concern, again, back in the old days, we said, "Hey, would you like to be a firefighter? Here's your turnout, here's your boots, here's your badge, we'll train you on, on the job." Today, California state firefighter to firefighter one is probably about a 300, and don't quote me on the exact number of hours, but a true firefighter one, certified firefighter is like 380 hours that they have to put in, in training. Trench rescue, low-angle rescue, heavy rescue components, throwing ladders, pulling hose, things of that sort. So, the way we recruit for firefighters is we go to these local colleges like Oxnard College, Fire Academy, Verdugo, Rio Hondo. These are all colleges that actually graduate these firefighters that have invested, these gentlemen, ladies and gentlemen, have invested that amount of time and then they come, we recruit them to come to work for us as volunteers.
Okay, well, thank you. That was interesting and educational to me. Now, do we, obviously, they have to be, have some level of education to, to be recruited. Do you go to the high schools or the, and just locally?
Sure. We have, we've had two, actually, we've had, his name is Anthony Ventura. He was actually through our first fire academy and I believe you and Brian were there. Anthony Ventura was a high school graduate who, right after high school, we started our very first fire academy. In fact, he was there as well. And they, we recruited him because he started as a cadet at, that's a high school program. This year, we have a gentleman, last name was Gonzalo. In fact, through our foundation, we gave him a, I believe it's a $500 scholarship to send him through the Oxnard Fire, to help him to get through the Oxnard Fire Academy. Remember, they have to pay for that course. It's like a $3,000 course, roughly about $3,000 just to get through that course. We were able to, the foundation was able to give $500. So, he will go to this Oxnard Academy next semester for, actually, I think it's a two semester program. it's a two semester program, and then he'll come back to the city of Thelmore and volunteer until he will move on. And, and just to further the perspective, that's what, that's what we're up against with Thelmore Fire, is that we have this constant revolving door. We have these ladies and gentlemen that want to be firefighters, and they use us as a stepping stone. So we went from the volunteer firefighter that lived, worked, and served the community, and because this, not just because of state, but because of the requirements that they have to have to become a firefighter, that process, or being able to pull those type of resources, has become harder and harder and harder. That's why you see, so that most of these departments are going to full-time departments, because, you know, obviously public safety is one of the number one things that we, we have to offer, or we offer to our citizens. And it's getting harder and harder to fill that role with volunteers.
Okay. Well, I would hope that any, any students in our local high schools would be looking at that as an opportunity, maybe moving on to Ventura.
And, and we have to really, really remember, these students will probably go to college, and these students usually work as well. So it's trying to get enough people to fill those voids during, because everybody works, everybody, and, and the problem we're having this day and age is because of the economy. I mean, most people have two to three jobs. And therefore, the last thing their spouses, girlfriends, or significant other want them to do is spend their only day off at the fire station, you know, training, or running calls, or whatever it is that comes up for that particular day. So it's, it's becoming more and more challenging as time goes on.
Okay.
Let me, let me just say something. Really, you mentioned the foundation. You might want to add some clarity about the foundation being a nonprofit, totally separate, off city books, has nothing to do with the city whatsoever, that funded the young man who went to college?
Yes, we support, we formed a foundation about a year and a half ago, and that foundation's is, is what you just mentioned. It's a totally nonprofit, 501(c)(3), they, we just, or the foundation just received that about, about six months ago. And the purpose of that is to, because training is so costly. A good example is, one of our firefighters wants to take the, the advanced hazmat operational training. Well, guess what? That training costs almost $4,000 to send him. Not only the $4,000 to send him, but the time he's away from work, that he's not getting paid as well. So it's extremely, firefighting is extremely, extremely, extremely expensive. And this foundation was set up just to do that, is to help offset the educational expense for these young men and women who want to continue on into the fire service. Not only to help us, obviously, but in return, we help them with, the foundation helps them with the educational monies to go, to move forward.
Thank you. Any questions or comments?
Thank you.
Thank you. Appreciate that. Indulgence. Okay.
Mayor, maybe you might, years past, when you reviewed the budget, you might want to just say what the expenses are, and how much we run the fire department for when we get these major funds. Fire department runs, projected for 2013, $776,000 is what it costs us to provide fire protection to the citizens of Thelmore. And that is no bargain, and you'll never find one.
Great, thank you. And I would like to point out, that is a reduction from our 2011 actual was 803,000. So there's been about a $25,000 reduction in that. Thanks for reminding me of that, Steve. I think that's a good idea. But some of them were flashing through.
Sure.
Yeah, our, our biggest expense early is the police department. So let's, let's recap that one. Our total expenditures are $2,914,749. That represents quite a big chunk of our general fund, about half of it.
Yeah, it's a reduction.
Yeah, and that is a reduction. Our 2011 actual was 3,000, 3,489,517. So that's about a 500,000, half a million dollar reduction. So, it's an FYI.
Can we move over to page 56, Animal Control?
Sure.
We're funding Animal Control for $64,000. We get, what is it, 18 hours of service a month. Are we under a legal obligation to contract with Ventura County to provide Animal Control services? I don't know.
Cities are under an obligation to have Animal Control, or you have to provide it in some way, shape, or form. Oh, sorry. So whether, I don't know what the city would have to renew it and look at what the escape clause is. In terms of, of service does have to be provided, and there are certain mandated costs that people have to pick up.
Well, correct. And from my recollection, from a conversation I've had with Ventura County Animal Services, is that cities can bow out. However, legal of the city will have to check out right this way. Good example is San Pol, Bay of La Jolla, with Ventura County Animal Control. They have their own system. And as far as the nuts and bolts of that, from Miss Diane Rowley, her past email conversations was, and again, this is not coming from an economic professor or anyone like that, but the cost would outweigh any type of benefit for our city. That's, that's unofficially, that's this information that I've got.
Do we know what San Pol pays to this group?
Got it. Got it. I don't know. It's just, it was just organized.
Yeah, I know, I know it's fresh.
Right. And so for this year, at least, I would not recommend, until they let them get their sea legs, let them figure what they're doing, and for next year, this year, you know, 14, then as they've been able to adapt and get their operation up, and I think if it turns out that it's a good deal, and it's something that will work in the city, we'll begin.
And as I, as I conveyed, I was maybe a month ago, as such, as it was a request from a citizen, at that time, Ms. Rowley, who was, who's in charge of San Pol, she's partly in charge of the San Pol Spark, I asked her to, at her, her time convenience, to present a, a presentation for us, and I, I think, you know, when, I think that's something we should attend.
Yeah, I'd, I'd like to look at it just from an economic standpoint. If we can seek the same level of service, monetary savings, we should, we should be all over that like the dog catcher on my neighbor's dog. So I, I understand the comment about letting them get up and running, and I think that's, that's prudent recommendation. But hopefully the council will remember that with the next budget. And I think the San Pol shelter is a milk-kill shelter.
Right.
Not that I'm against utilization, but that's something to consider.
Is it in San Pol, or?
It's in town.
I don't know what's that.
I agree. I would like to keep this on the back burner, or something to look into. Because from my, I'm thinking, how is it economical for them to come? All we only have two or three of them at Camarillo. So I know if I have to go to Camarillo for a meeting, that's an hour one way. So, I mean, just, just the gas and the time, it is, there's a lot, a lot of money sitting right there that's not being utilized in, in service. It's travel time.
And the other, and the other issue on that is, and I was going to mention this this evening, and I still will, that there is a service by a veterinarian who offers a free-of-charge state-owned mobile clinic. Now, he's asking each city to grasp on to that idea, and, so it's something that is at no cost.
You're saying that he offers free, free service, and it gives him, and he's a mobile unit, therefore it gives him...
He works, he works when they cluster other veterinarians.
Right.
Who provide the service. They take donations. However, if an individual doesn't have the monies, he will provide the service for them.
And you found this out through the Animal Control?
Yes, it is, especially.
Could you get us that?
That's what I'm working on.
Good.
Okay, next, next page.
Well, just, once again, you may just want to mention that we're not funding code enforcement. It's one of the areas that you were looking at producing services to save money.
We are funding emergency.
Emergency.
Right.
$6,000 for loading.
Well, for, for emergency housing issues, the other thing is that, as Steve said at one of the last meetings, that of course, if something very serious comes up, you know, we will attempt to deal with it. But you're right, funding has for public nuisance and zoning code, we have eliminated funds for that. But if it's public safety, then we'll deal with it.
So no response to checking calls?
[laughing]
Just getting it out there, since that's the number one.
Yeah.
Don't look for the red siren coming to save the day when you call about checking.
Parks, I don't have any comments, but I will repeat that the recommended budget is $226,164 for park maintenance. That's a reduction from the 2011 actual, from $325,123. That's not a reduction, that was what the 2011 actual was. So that's $100,000 reduction. Page 70.
And we might want to note that in the budget, grounds maintenance has always been, well, is in this, in this budget, there's, it was never even planning closing parks.
And just a quick reminder that the parks budget, parks maintenance, that's more than just those four parks. It's also that, like, the grassy areas that we maintain. So there's a bunch of, there are other areas of town that are not going to be special maintenance for that.
Those are all the comments I have on the general fund accounts. Anybody else? Any general fund accounts? Any public comments or questions on the general fund issue? Well, the next section of the budget then is the special revenue funds. We had traffic safety, streets, drains.
Yeah, I do have a question on streets and drains. We're showing supply and services and workload of $273,000 for 2015. I believe that was, if we go back to the Capitol room, and I thought we had something line item there about streets. So what work are we anticipating doing for streets in this budget cycle for $273,000?
If you'll just add about 270, yeah, at page 87, add in that 273,000, 120,000 is for streetlights, and for Edison. So you actually just have, there's two line items, 323 and 325, where we've put in money for street maintenance and sidewalk maintenance. I think everybody's aware that we have some major issues with sidewalks. And so we're budgeting some money to try to get the sidewalks done. And a minimal amount, 50,000 for street maintenance is...
For emergency puddle areas.
Hopefully, we can get some puddles fixed next year.
So your, your streetlights for Edison, is that new areas, new building, new, 220,000? All city lights replacement? What is that?
No, it's just, it's, yeah, it's the Edison cost for streetlights that are...
Just electricity.
Just electricity for lights that are not in the landscape and lighting district.
Doesn't include development in any of the new areas which have landscape lighting districts, and so it's a special bill?
So this, this is the one, we had special in the past. This is the, everybody else?
Yes.
That's not in special.
Your house, my house, those houses, those aren't in landscape lighting.
Yeah. Although, I know at my church, I pay in box money.
Are, are these streetlights, are there any opportunities to, to get low LEDs, or some other low cost to reduce the electricity usage on those lights?
Mayor, in terms of, certainly we can take a look at it, but there are two people left in terms of doing this. I know that some people, some vendors have been sending us emails saying, by volume, we can do this for you. I think that there, it's certainly something we can check into. We don't know at this point in time exactly what was involved. But it's certainly something we can ask the Energy Collaborative about, and see if they have the information on it. But I know that, because I've been getting those same emails, and whether or not the savings will materialize or be accurate, I think I have to, need to check with that energy. Okay. And I know when we did this, you know, I think you're aware that we've done the energy grant, and they're still working on some of those issues. And when they went through and did some of the lights out here in the park, there were several of them that they were not able to use the energy efficient light, lighting devices because of the old structure. And so they said it was not cost-effective for them to go through and have to bring that old globe and light, and I'm not an electrical, but bring out that old electrical, so that they could install a less expensive lighting fixture. And so I don't know if we would also encounter that with doing the streetlights, which are the old streetlights, whether or not that would then entail some kind of retrofit.
Edison does have incentive programs and partners with cities and businesses for conservation purposes. And in addition to the immediate cost savings on the bill, there is financial money that comes back to those entities. So I would recommend that we start a dialogue with, with Maureen, who's here tonight as our representative. She could help us with that, and let the, let the utility be a partner in the city.
And then your franchise fees will go down because we're paying a lot less money.
So, Mayor, do you, I think, do you see the...
Uh, I don't know, I would say, I think that's Brian.
Brian?
Yes.
And who, who makes that, who makes up that board?
Supervisors, key council members, mayors. I don't have an absolute list. I've been to one meeting since I've been assigned to that commission. But it's, it's made up of a lot of officials.
And I guess more a master, is, is their goal to do things like we're talking about?
Yes.
Reduction?
There, there have been...
They have ideas?
Yes, they're actually... Yes, they're actually, last month I presented my, or it was two months ago, I presented my findings from my first commission meeting, and there was some lighting, a promenade was replaced, and there was a few H D A C units that were replaced at the police, sorry, there have, there is some progress there, however, one of my requests were to have a, an energy template for our city, and today we don't have a ballot, and I've been asking for one, however, seeing we're standing financially, it's, it's very difficult, but it's something that I am not most comfortable in, should develop a template that would benefit us financially.
Thanks.
I do have a question, the city manager, in respect to the fifty thousand dollars budgeted for street maintenance. Seeing how miniscule this number is, how will, who will be delegating the, the areas, areas of the city such as puddles, seeing that much of our cities have issues with storm damage? How will we know? I, I receive complaints weekly such as there's areas of district that are deteriorating.
Yeah, we're, we're actually, Dave Smallwood has taken an inventory of the worst parts of the, of the cities and, and the least of the worst, so we have identified, and he has this square footage, I believe, of the, of the areas that are in gross need of repair.
That must be a book in target. And I request...
Absolutely, we'll, we'll get you, just give us a couple of days.
Yeah.
And we're due.
Add it to the volume?
Yeah, absolutely. Good to have you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Okay, any other special fund questions? Special revenue funds?
Well, I suggest we bypass the landscaping and lighting districts since we haven't been doing that on the twenty-sixth, and go into more detail about those specifically.
All right. I'd like, I'd like to hear some about the public transit fund, what's going on with the Vista. If anybody has any information on that.
I've been getting a lot of emails from the Transportation Commission, and frankly, you don't know what's going on. We do have a special meeting Thursday, so they can tell us what's, what's happening at two P M. If you're interested, it's going to be in Camarillo, two P M, V C T C, that's the Transportation Commission. Apparently, the, the company which own the Visa buses is from Paytran, therefore they're having to sell off their inventory. And so V C T C did not get notified of this till recent, very recently, and they thought they were going to actually be able to renegotiate the one-year contract with the company through next July, and that's how they proceeding, and they were told within the last week that no, the company was from Paytran. So this is, this is out of the blue, and so now they're scrambling for alternatives, and they're going to talk to us about it on Thursday too. That's very...
Well, I look forward to hearing what the solution's going to be for that, because that would be devastating using our Vista buses.
Well, apparently the contract is in the, in the June, that's how immediate crisis it is, that there's a possibility we can have Visa buses starting July first. So, yeah, it's going to be...
Very much so.
Vista.
Thank you.
Okay, well, hopefully somebody will pick up the, the rams there, so to speak, and find buses somewhere, because we do have money for that. We have budgeted four hundred and eighty-two thousand dollars for public transportation. Now, I think that's from V C T C.
Right, it is, and I will say officially they're scrambling, and it gets some, some answer.
Okay, and, and I guess I could also, on the 2011 actuals, they were, it was three hundred and eighty-nine thousand, and 2013 recommended four hundred and eighty-two thousand, so that's almost a hundred thousand dollar increase in two years. Are they still...
I would say that, you know, our ridership has increased quite a bit, they've actually added buses to the one-twenty-six route.
Yeah, okay, right, next. Anything on the recreation fund? Which is on page one-hundred and nine, one-hundred and ten. Just a...
I have a question. What is the, I just, what's the progress of block grant?
Top line? Top line. We're assisting recreation on the preparation of the actual contract documents for that. We see they're using community owned block grant funds, C D B G funds, the contract is about this thick, and they have to comply with all of these elements. Like I said, we're in the process in my shop to get that pulled together, probably we'd have to meet with the county to go over that document, make sure it's in compliance, probably we'd have to do some additional work, I just got involved in this kind of late in the process, but we're probably going to need some, the design work done, the landscaping, the grading of that site. I had my vision of this just going in a flat grassy area, and that's not the case, it's on a sloped area that has never been developed in the paddock. It's a beautiful location for this unit, but we have to do a little bit of work, so I'm hoping that we get this out here in the future, but needless to say, this is amongst all the other things that we're responsible for doing, but we are pursuing the work on that.
Where is that supposed to be?
It's, I, I kind of know near the transformers, I think there's a restrooms, I would just say it's just west of, or east of that location, it's kind of a sloped area, it's, and the other issue that we're going to have to look at is making it accessible for radiator purposes, and so there's, there's some work that we're going to have to do on that, and we've had meetings with the school district, they will be involved in the construction management of that for us, which I appreciate that being offered to us, so we can help execute like that, but basically the whole contract process is our responsibility, and we'll be bringing that forward as soon as we get that off, pulled together, for your consideration to go out to update.
I would like to, at the current speed of council, to review the contract for the Santa Clara Valley Boys and Girls Project, see if there's anything in there that we can restructure to cost saving, we were there to help them out, and we did, the council was correct to do so.
Thank you, Steve.
Let me just add to that a little bit. Steve, you mentioned that the more unified school district is, they're providing project management, construction management?
Construction, I would call it construction management at this point, they would have the day-to-day oversight of the contractor when he gets to that, of course, the construction, verify compliance, they're familiar with the playground, safety requirements, and track, head track requirements, all of those issues, which I would like to say I was an expert on, but I'm not, but they, they do have people on staff that can help us with all of those kinds of issues, so it, it is nice that we have that opportunity to work with them.
Yeah, okay, it seems like a natural fit, they build plenty of playgrounds and keep them up to state code. Are we under an obligation from the county who's administering the C D B G funds on this project to go out to bid for project management?
No.
No?
There's no, that, that would be a in-house service type of operation.
Much like with the rest of our professional services.
Professional services. What we're obligated to go out to bid on is the actual construction portion of this. And I don't know how much detail you want to get into, but we're, one of the issues is how do we, you know, purchase the playground equipment and not have to go through the bidding process? We've been in contact with the county and seen how we can do that, so maybe we have to buy that and then have the contractor install that, so there's a lot of details that we're still working through. I was very involved in my previous job, I administered the community owned block grant almost from the inception of the program, and so I have a lot of experience in that, and there's, there's ways that we can comply, but the C D B G contract procedures are extremely enforce, and, and a lot more than our normal public contract, and literally, when I say this, I mean that, that's how thick that document is, and there are strict guidelines we have to comply with.
Is, is the school district intended to do the record keeping and filing for M A V S and...
The M A V S vacant and all that, I would imagine that I could be involved in that, I mean, I'm going to work closely with them, they can probably help out on doing some of the, the field interviews that have to be done, but we'll, we'll be involved in that process to make sure it's in compliance.
If you haven't, if you haven't worked with Bob Zouby yet, you'll, you'll find him a dynamic individual at the school district, he's a...
Yeah, we met him and had an initial meeting with the net, and I met with him, so we're working on...
Two clarification points, the county is wanting us to hire an actual M A V S vacant unless they backed off on that, and then unless something's changed, the school district is doing the project management, we're basically free, because the, we said we give them a vehicle or perhaps two, depending on the dollar value of those vehicles.
Water.
Pardon me?
Waters.
Yeah, that's true, Yvonne, and that's an option, but if, if, if I'm involved in it, maybe we can hold on that.
I appreciate looking for cost savings like that, and partnering with the school district, it's a great idea.
Yeah, I apologize for... I did have a request to see if we have the opportunity to forward the Boys and Girls Project contract, and see where they stand financially, and to see if there's any type of revenue that we've seen, we've had and helping them the last couple of years, and things.
Is that toward the recreational?
Yeah.
I have some member slides I will this morning, as a matter of fact, someone from the board came in, and I talked to them briefly about this item, and especially as it relates to next year, and what they told me is that pretty, they're happy, just as hard times as they are, that I will tell them that we have a formal request from the city council for that kind of discussion.
And for, and for clarity, I'm not, I'm not knocking the Boys and Girls Project, they're a great entity, however, you know, it's time that we do look at it, we be diligent to see if there's something that we can redo to bring this up.
I, I told them that next year for sure, they're probably going to have to pick up the whole cost, so they need to start thinking about that now.
It can be suggested to them, if they apply for grants, that rental facilities or certain large grants, they can apply for, because I do know they get some grants, so that can actually be written into the grant.
And they, they have a, you know, they have a president who's doing a great job with fundraising, asking, mistaking, so I think they're, they have some great opportunities there, so it's not, it's not my point to say, you know, it's abandoned, but I think we should be visiting. Also, I had a suggestion for the council, before we adopt the budget, would be to go over our community services fees.
Yeah, I believe that was a request from the last night's Parks and Rec meeting, to look at that, so I, I support that, as the alternate, I was at a meeting last night also, so I heard the request, appreciate Brian for bringing it forward, you probably should hear that. I'd like to talk about some other issues within the recreation department, some recent changes that were in the budget, I understand the methodology, perhaps, before we get to the fee schedule, which is kind of off that.
And what, the ballot points that were presented were, were competing against individuals who now, with the economy, have lower their rates, such as party rentals at the Sears and Memorial, and it seems as we're being a skeleton, we're being leased out because our rates are not competitive, so it seems to me that makes sense that we're not receiving the revenue because we're, we're not ballpark.
Yeah, those, those were the...
Example would be El Paso, Elton's Ranch.
So, to add some figures to that, last night at Parks and Rec, they heard that El Paso rents their area for two fifty, and Elton's Ranch rents their clubhouse for about the same amount of money, and by comparison, our fee schedule for Senior Center is over eight hundred dollars, and that doesn't include the deposit, so we've essentially...
Is that a daily rate? Is that what we charge for a daily rate?
I don't know if that's daily or...
I believe it is a daily rate, but there's also not, you got to put in a deposit.
Yeah, they don't include deposit, right?
If you figure that, it's essentially a thousand dollars.
Yeah, you'll get the deposit back, hopefully, unless you crash the building, but bottom line is price ourselves out of business, and the thinking of the Parks and Rec Commission last night, if you remember, Brian, was perhaps we could increase revenue by revising our building fee schedules, so we get more business.
And at the time when this fee schedule was reformatted, it was at a time that we were trying to beat as, when I, I was in sport, I thought it would bring more revenue at the time, however, when the market dictates that we're not in the business, competitors will lower their prices to see fit, so it's something that I would like the council to entertain, I think it's something that will bring revenue and will make... I think it's something that will bring revenue and will make it the least competitive.
Could I ask staff, how are you on the timing of bringing something like that to council for revision?
That is, you know, something like that means essentially that the master fee schedule, we need to discuss it tonight. So if you have a number that you're thinking of, then we would need to know it and fit it in because what is proposed is on the 26th that you adopt that, the gradient basis, it also contains the water and sewer rates as well. So that is the, if we put off the adoption, and if we put off the adoption, then you just, you're charging the old rates for a while and, you know, sewer rates will go in with that July.
Do you have a rate schedule? There was, I believe, per my request, I requested a fee schedule through a net, I believe she dropped off a fee schedule on each of our boxes, each council.
So are you asking just for these particular rental facilities? Because it looks like there's a multi-purpose room.
There's community, where's that?
I guess that's the senior center? Is that the multi-purpose room? It's $800 a day.
And there's meal set.
Pardon me?
Meal set.
No.
It authorizes it, do you know?
And Central Park per section?
That was the other, the other area that was mentioned was the cost of renting Central Park right outside our steps. You know, it's a beautiful location with the fountain and the green grass and picturesque building and the thinking of Parks and Recreation Commission was that if that was revised, that we could increase more revenue.
Well, I, you know, I would be in support of reducing both of those by 50%.
What else? What would be another problem?
The other ones are reasonable. I think that just...
Jimmy, do you need to...
Excuse me, if we can't hear you, can you speak in the wireless place?
Number, the Central Park is 600 per section and the Boys and Girls Club is 500 per day. The multi-purpose room, which I'm assuming is the senior center, is 800 per day plus deposit. So my suggestion would be if you think that that's going to help, that we could reduce those by 50%.
I think it's about quantity and the more we get, the more we ask.
Excuse me for one moment, I need, maybe we could just take a quick little break and let us find out what the old prices, because I know we did increase them, but we also tried this at the theater, as we recall, and it didn't end up bringing in the revenue that we had hoped for. So let's just find out what the old rates were, how much we increase them, and we can get that pretty fast, I think.
Okay. 500 per section.